Mr. Chairman, where's that?
Okay, welcome everybody in the audience and those on YouTube. Today is Monday, May 6th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. At this time, I would please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks to everyone. Uh, everyone's had a chance to see the agenda. If there's no additions or corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approved agenda of May 6th.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're gonna go right into our agenda. These are all action items. The first one is the meeting minutes of April 29th.
Make a motion that we approved meeting minutes of April 29th?
I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next agenda item is the signed resolution 2024-11, allocating signature authority on behalf of the full board to Chairman Hasbrook for unlimited purpose pursuant to Idaho Code 31602.
And what is that? Can somebody explain that to me?
Oh, come on up. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Thompson. Uh, the purpose of the resolution is for, uh, to give Commissioner Hasbrook signing authority, uh, to close on the purchase of the Amerititle Building. We typically will have all three board members sign as, as one big signature block, but just as a matter of, of convenience, there's a lot of papers to sign, as you know, in closings, and it'll be, uh, probably a midweek thing that we'll, uh, we'll have to have a representative from the board there to be able to sign those documents on, on behalf of the board. So the res-
So what if, what if he has a broke leg and can't make it? Can one other, can one other two do it?
We will have to come back with a different resolution because it names him specifically, so. And it's for a very limited purpose. It's only for, it's only for this, uh-
Just for this?
Yes, yes. Otherwise, uh, according to Idaho Code, the full board, uh, is, has to sign unless you delegate that authority like we're doing here.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve resolution 2024-11 so that Chairman Hasbrook can sign for Amerititle purchase.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And Brian, do you know that I'm gone tomorrow?
Yes, it's gonna be a couple weeks before.
Okay, okay, good, good. Okay, our next agenda item is also an action item. This is a letter of support for the EMS grant. And unfortunately, I have not had a chance to read that. Well, this is for extrication equipment.
Mm-hmm.
It's just for spreader, combination tool, and ram.
It's just, I guess, so they can do a grant to-
Okay, so I'll make the motion. We approve the letter of support for the state EMS grant for the city of Donley.
Second.
Who does second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Here, our next agenda item is a vacation 24-01, uh, portions of Bing's Road and Brad's Lane. And on the agenda, it's listed for 9:15, so we, we have about five minutes. So Doug, if you'll mute us, we're gonna need send on this one. And we'll be back here at quarter after. Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're at our 9:15 agenda item. This is a public hearing action item. This is a vacation 2401, portions of Bing's Road and Brad's Lane. So at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone on the board has any ex parte conflict of interest. I do not, and I do not either. So we will continue. Cindy, you want to give us a quick rundown what we're doing?
Um, I'll give you the staff report for vacation 2401, vacation of portions of Bing's Road and Brad's Lane. The applicants are Bennett Reed Payne and Connie Jo Payne. They're requesting a vacation of unbuilt portions of public road rights of way. The vacated area would include the following: Bing's Road between Walters Lane and West Mountain Road, and Brad's Lane between Jo's Road and West Mountain Road. The road rights of way are located within Allen subdivision. The plot was recorded at Book Two, page 12, on October 8th, 1956. The public rights of way were dedicated to the public on the plot. The plot does not include any utility easements in this section of road right of way except for what is inherent to a public right of way. If the road rights of way are vacated, the lot would become the property of the adjoining lot owners. All surrounding lots are owned by the applicants. This property is located in the South Lake Recreational Sewer and Water District. Uh, there have been proposed vacations of rights of way in the West Mountain area in previous years that were denied in order to preserve rights of way for possible sewer lines. The commission can determine if these particular rights of way are needed. The applicant responded after the P&amp;Z Commission here, public hearing on March 14th. They will be combining their lots and the road rights of way into three different lots as shown in the attached map. At a properly noticed public hearing on March 14th, the Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed vacation so long as the parcels are combined. Uh, I attached the facts and conclusions. Legal notice was completed. Uh, Mike Reno, Central District Health stated Central District Health has, has no objections to the proposal. Laura Lacy, Idaho Power stated that records indicate there are no Idaho Power Company facilities within the road rights of way. Therefore, Idaho Power can support the proposed vacation. And Steve Hall, Cascade, uh, Fire Chief supports the proposed vacation as the lots will have access to existing maintained roads. Uh, public comments received, letters in support. The existing roads provide adequate access, and those letters of support were from Leonard and Patricia Kopp, and then Chris and Michelle Cooper. And then another neighbor, uh, Russ and Kathy Poole, ten Brad's Lane, supported the vacation of a portion of Brad's Lane. However, in regards to Bing's Road, there's a need to develop this road from Walters Lane to West Mountain Road. Developing this portion of roadway would create another public access point to West Mountain Road and provide the homeowners on Bing's Road a straight access to West Mountain Road, which would be especially helpful during the snow months. Uh, listed areas, um, of the ordinance for your review. The site's within Cascade Fire District. It's not in an irrigation district or a herd district. It's in South Lake Recreational Sewer and Water District. However, no infrastructure exists. The original recorded plot did not include utility easements. The board needs to determine if the future development of the neighborhood would be inhibited by the vacation of either or both the road rights ways. Um, if approved, the board would sign a resolution for a declaration of vacation. Um, if approved, a copy of the resolution should be sent to Laura Lacy, Idaho Power, and deeds will need to be prepared by the applicant to convey the property along the right of way from Valley County. A recommended, uh, motion would be, if approved, I move to approve vacation, um, in portions of Bing's Road and Brad's Lane and accept the P&amp;Z Commission. Facts and conclusion is your own. And then you approve the resolution 24-10, declaration of vacation of a portion of Bing's Road and Brad's Lane. And you might also include in their, uh, motion to allow the chairman to sign the deeds once prepared, and then I wouldn't have to come back. And then there's a recommended motion in case you choose to deny, which is pretty simple. And that ends my staff report.
A couple of questions, Cindy, now I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way out of there now is Walters Lane? Is the main access out, or?
And Jo's Road.
Jo's Road. Jo's Road hits Walters Lane. Does Walters Lane go through to the, uh, West Mountain Road?
Let me look, let's see. Right now, here's, here's the map. And you're looking north. So Walters Lane goes to West Mountain Road.
Yep.
And Jo's Road goes to West Mountain Road. You're vacating this portion of Brad's Lane and this portion of Bing's Road. The applicant owns all of the surrounding land.
All of those lots? That was my next question.
Yes, they want to vacate these so that they can create decent lots to build on.
So folks coming, oh, they're not going to Jo's Road with Brad's Lane? It doesn't reach Jo's. In my picture here-
Yes, it does. Brad's Lane goes to Jo's Road now. Remember, Jo's Road was just completed here.
That, okay, I thought, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at this one you sent, Cindy. This is the one that really makes it pretty easy. See, and here it shows Jo's, Brad going across Jo's Road. So they hit Jo's and turn left now?
Yes.
Okay. So you just wanna, you wanna get rid of that little piece of Brad's, portion of unbuilt Brad's Lane. But the question, Cindy, where it said on Bing's?
Mm-hmm.
If they went straight across, make it easier to access.
Yeah, but I don't know what the distance. The pools live there on Jo's Road. The pools live, their property is in this location over here, and this is the road they're commenting on.
And that road there is Bing's Road?
Yes, this is Bing's Road.
So the comment, those one individual had was, they didn't want that one, um, that one deleted on Bing's Road.
Right, they, they don't want this one vacated.
Right.
They live over here.
But the other one was fine?
They're fine with this one.
Yep.
They can use Brad's Lane instead, huh?
So is that the motion?
Well, no, Brad's Lane isn't built here.
Okay.
These people here just pop out on Jo's Road.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. And that's really heavily timbered ground, if I remember right.
And I'm not sure what the incline is through here. You know, some of that's steep and you can never get a road up.
And I want to just confirm, the applicants, Ben and Connie, own all of those lots that you've got in orange?
Yes, and I believe that they're here.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So any more questions for Cindy?
Not right now, I think we're good.
So Ben and Connie, is there anything you guys want to add? Okay.
The reason why is-
Joe, or Ben, could you come to the mic, you guys, so they can hear online? Please, thank you. Say your name for the record, please.
Uh, Bennett Reed Payne. Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Um, what, what we did is we divided up in three different sections because we have three kids, so. It's just carrying on, you know, for them. But we're gonna keep the whole thing, and I think if we do build something, it's one cabin and that's it. So.
And Ben, you're okay with the combination request? You combine them all into one lot?
We would rather do three sections.
And you've got those, Cindy?
He, he's going to, what he will do, he will create deeds for these, and then he will combine into the parcels that he wants.
Yeah.
He wants to keep it in three for his three kids, eventually.
So, yeah, Bing's Road, or 644 Bing's and Walters Lane, I guess that's Bing's Road. Um, we had combined Lot 53 and Lot 52 on that road, and then Lot 16 and Lot 23 for Brad's Lane. I guess it don't matter on that one, but.
Okay.
Okay. And there is no pins there, I don't think. The only pins that are, is visible right now, and I never checked, is Jo's Road. And they put Jo's Road in.
So the, the question on Bing's Road, where they leave it, leave the access for, um, I guess what I'm understanding is they want to leave that access so it can go straight to West Mountain Road, eventually?
It does, but, I mean, it would be real spending to do because it's, it is a deep incline up there. If you check it out, I mean, they'd be putting a lot of money into it, putting that road in to make that functional.
And they using Walters now to get out?
They're using Walters, yeah, and they're using Jo's Road. And the pools are on Jo's Road. I don't know that, you'd think they'd want Brad's Lane and not Bing's Road.
Hmm.
Because they're not even over on that side. I don't understand why they want that.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna go ahead, if there's no more questions, and open up the public hearing and, uh, ask if there's anyone who is a proponent of this application. Please let the record show there is none. Anyone that is non-committed? Please let the record show there was none. Any of that are opposed? Please let the record show there is none. Uh, be no more questions or concerns. I'll close the public hearing, Doug, at 9:26, and bring it back for deliberation. I think in this case, where, where Ben and Connie own all the lots in this whole area, I think this is, makes sense. And Ben makes a very good point. To bring Bing's Road on up to West Mountain, you'd have to have a fill of probably 10, 12 feet, so it's not too steep. And, um, there's also a, kind of a fire hazard in that area, too, that I'm more concerned about than anything. But I know you guys are aware of that, and hopefully you will go in and take some of that timber out and make it fire safe before you build your cabin.
We've, we've been cleaning it up. I bought a trailer, and I've got a backhoe, and we're cutting the wood up, and we're getting all the debris out. And thank God, it's, it's free dump for the, the debris. That's, that's a plus.
Isn't that a nice feature?
It is a nice feature.
A little while.
It'll take us a while to get all the stumps out there, too.
It's a lifetime. If there's no more questions or concerns, I'll move to approve vacation application 24-01, vacation of portions of Bing's Road and Brad's Lane, and accept the planning and zoning commission's facts and conclusions as our own. I move to approve resolution 24-10, the, the declaration itself, and to, would, oh, and to authorize the chairman to sign the deed upon completion. I'll second that. Hey, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. There you go. Thank you for coming in, folks.
So you understand that you'll have to have the deeds prepared?
Yeah, and we want them to have it surveyed, right?
Unless someone, I'll, I'll be over there in just a second.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the voter is on her way.
Listen, if you want to get it back to me, please.
Well, that's how you, we'll combine lots into billable parcels.
Yes.
How many acres will that be? That'd be two acres, three acres? I didn't even look.
It was, yeah, there wasn't, uh, it wasn't very much. I was reading that.
Six, eight, ten, twelve.
Has he got two lots there? Or three?
He's got ten lots. He might get two acres out of it, maybe an acre and a half.
Not much.
No, those ones up by the road are just.
There come Miss Gabby.
So he can only really do two sub- he thinks in there if I had the gas, and I'm not sure he can do it then. Hey, Gabby?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back on, we'll move on.
Mr. Chairman, we're off me.
Welcome back, everybody. We're at our nine forty-five action item. This is signed a published works construction agreement with OK Gravels. Larry, come on up. I know at one time we talked about maybe Jeff doing this, but apparently he doesn't have time to do it. And the budget here is for sixteen-nine. Is half of that covered, or what do we got to pay for that?
I don't have anything in my budget to pay for it at all.
So this has got to come from the Bike Path Committee. Do they have any?
I was told that they've spent all their money that they have, too.
And they're asking for us to pay this?
They're asking for the county to pay for the sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars to move the material from Smith Ferry up there.
Smith's Ferry, all the way up to where they're doing the bike path on Sampson Trail?
Yeah. It's that, all that recycled asphalt pulled off Highway fifty-five.
Right.
So that way, they don't have to purchase the gravel. They're just purchasing truck time.
Do they have any other source up in that area they could get this from?
I was told that this is the least expensive way to do it.
I mean, truck times, what always kills us. We know that.
Yeah, we're looking at.
How many yards? Six hundred and fifty yards?
Yeah, I think it was more than that. But it's fourteen, fourteen days of pushing.
So that's sixty-five trucks. Sixty-five loads. You get about ten to twelve yards a load. And it's twenty-six dollars a yard.
Is it OK's material, or is it our material?
It's our material.
Our material.
Now, this was donated to us when we allowed the Atley to store some of their equipment in our yard down there at Wellington. And we said, yeah, you can store our equipment there, but we want all the recycled asphalt. We'll take all that we can get.
So we don't have to pay for material. We just got to pay for the hauling?
We just have to haul it. And to be honest with you, I wish I would have caught this. This is a, we didn't have a signed agreement. We will have all signed agreements from now on on the hauling.
Dear. So Doug, where can we get this from?
Pilt or General Fund Reserve, Mr. Chairman, will be our only options.
We're going to get more pilt here next month, right?
Yeah, we just saw that paperwork on that one.
How much did it go down from last year, Doug?
The payment amount, Commissioner Thompson?
The one from pilt.
So the funding that we just received from Secure Rule Schools, if that's what you're asking about, there was a reduction of approximately three hundred thousand.
Oh, that's right. That was Secure Rules. I'm sorry. That wasn't pilt. You're right. My bad.
Well, we're kind of halfway into that project now. I hate to stop. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we authorize pilt funds of sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars for the Sampson Trail Bike Path improvements. And to approve this contract with OK Gravel.
I'll second that.
Probably come back to bite us here, but got a motion to second all in favor? Please say aye. Aye, motion carries. Do you have anything printed out that I could sign, Larry?
I do.
Me and I'm up.
So there's two of them here. There's the agreement and the public works. Is that correct?
First, we thought about just having the OK Gravel go on to follow these contracts. But then we decided just keep.
Okay, Neil just brought up a good point. We have the Public Works agreement as well. Did my motion include the Public?
Mr. Chairman, it did.
We're okay.
Yeah, they're showing fifty thousand here, but.
Yeah, and that's gone to a hundred thousand. But does it, it won't go to a hundred thousand till July one?
July one.
Let's see, let's see, if I can bring it back. Doug, you got to sign this, too, but there's no D.
You want to copy that?
It's signed.
Yes, sir.
To you or to?
Please.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
You did send us the audit, didn't you?
Did in a separate email, Mr. Chairman.
Did you read it?
Did.
Is there a summary?
There's multiple summaries on several different pages, and that's why Jordan will be here.
Yeah, it's huge.
Kind of hit you guys with some of the hot topics for the.
Is it in the packet, or is it in the?
It was a separate email, Commissioner.
That's what I was thinking.
It was right after the.
It was on four twenty-nine. Did you send the EMS one, or?
I sent both. No, I can send you both.
I don't see the EMS one. I see the county one. Hey, welcome back, everybody. We're at our ten o'clock agenda. This is an action item, approval of the fiscal year. Twenty-three audit report. Turn it over to you.
All right, so I have two audits. I have the EMS district and the county. Or do we want to do the county now?
Do the county first, and then we have to.
Yeah, I know you have to switch up, so that's why I was. So I'm Jordan Swiger from Swiger, John &amp; Associates. We did the audit for your year end at September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So I'll go over briefly, hit a few high points. If you have questions, please stop me. But if you open up to the audit to page four, this is our opinion on your financial statements. What it says is that we looked at your financials. We looked at the supporting document, how things were being recorded in the system. Tied that out to bank statements and invoices, and our opinion at the end of the year, they are materially correct. Meaning everything was recorded there and everything tied out at the end of the year. From there, I will jump to page nine. And this is your balance sheet as of September thirtieth. So the, we'll go over some of the major funds, the bigger funds here. So the general fund, you ended with about four point nine million. Other items there are property tax receivable. That's just back taxes owed, the hundred sixty-two. Sixty-three thousand of interest receivable. That's up from what's been the past. Interest rates have kind of gone up there, bringing that up. Prepaid items of two fifty-eight. Most of that is insurance. This differs the year, and then some software that was paid for last fiscal year that's for the next. And then due from other governments of two eighty-three. That's sales tax that you get in October. That's for that last quarter. And then warrants and accounts payable, a hundred dollars, not much there. A bridge fund, you ended with just under seven point five million there. Again, a little bit of back property tax and interest receivable there. That one had about five hundred five thousand of warrants payable, mainly due to some projects there at the end of the year. A solid waste ended just under three point five million. So back taxes owed and about sixty thousand, sixty-six thousand dollars of payables there.
No interest on that money?
No, most of it is allocated to the general fund, and that's not interest income. It's just the year-end interest. So September, so it did get interest income for the year. The, the interest receivable, if it's small enough, it's normally not recorded. It's only if it's big, then it's pulled back to show up on the balance sheet. Okay. So yeah, most of it's sitting those two funds. Turn to page ten. The American Rescue Plan ended with about eight point six million. And then all the other funds that we'll look at later ended with just under six million dollars sitting in those. So all in, all your funds combined, you ended up with about thirty, just under thirty point four million dollars. Any questions on those? From there, I'll jump to page twelve. And these are the balance, the income statement for those funds. So about third line from the bottom, you'll see net change in fund balance. The general fund increased its fund balance about four hundred seventy thousand dollars. The road and bridge used about eight hundred thirty thousand dollars of its reserve for the year. A solid waste increased its reserve by about twenty-seven thousand dollars. Turning to page thirteen. Your American Rescue Act increased its reserve by about six point five million. You got that additional money, the payments during the year, and I think you'd spend about three hundred thousand of the ARPA money so far. And then all the other funds combined spent about six hundred thousand dollars of their reserve. So all in, your reserve increased by about five, five and a half million dollars. Any questions on those?
I guess more of a general question, Jordan. On the road department stuff, is that about normal for this compared to like last year? I mean, are we going backwards in the road department?
So that's very normal in a lot of government funds is you'll increase that reserve for several years, and then you'll spend it down for a couple of years. So you still have, like we said, the road fund ended the year with seven and a half million dollars in it. So it not, I'm not concerned with where that's been taken down to. And it, we'll look at it later, but it was within line with what was budgeted. So that's very common in government funds to see gains for a couple of years. And then you do a couple of big road projects, and you spend all of those. So you have losses for a couple of years. And then you'll see gains as you build up that reserve and then budget to spend it again.
So the eight hundred and thirty-three reserve in the negative is what I'm more concerned about?
So that, you ended the year with a positive reserve, so if you hold there, if you jump to page forty-one. So page forty-one, and we'll look at these later, but this is the budget. So this is what was planned to be done in the road fund. So the final budget, you'd plan to bring in six point three million dollars. It's planned to spend nine point seven million dollars. And you'd plan to spend about three point three million of your reserve. So instead, you brought in five point two. You brought in about a million less. You spent six point seven or about three million less. And instead of spending three million dollars of your reserve, you spent eight hundred thirty-three thousand of your reserve.
I got it. That's where that comes from.
Yep. So yes, the reserve went down, but I'm not concerned about that because that was the plan, was to spend that reserve. The more concern would be is if you built a reserve in that fund forever and never spent the reserve. So that you're spending the reserves, not a concern as long as you're not spending more reserve than you actually have. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Perfect. I'll jump back then to page thirteen. Let's see, we already looked at thirteen. I'm sorry. To page fifteen. This is the fair board. I think last year we started, we pull in their, their records. We look at their stuff as well. So they ended the year with about eighty-eight thousand dollars in their accounts. Then if you turn to page sixteen, they actually increased their reserve for the year by about thirty-four thousand dollars. They had brought in some extra funds there, so we were able to, they were able to do that. Turning to page seventeen. This is funds that you're holding on behalf of other taxing districts. So it's property tax that you've collected or state tax that you've collected that just hasn't been sent out yet. So the, at the end of the year, you had about seven hundred thousand dollars that you had that just haven't been sent out yet. And then back property tax that was still owed to be sent out. And then if you turn to page eighteen.
The other taxing districts, you're talking about EMS and hospitals.
And the cities and the schools, so all of that. Yep. And then also state, like DMV funds, state funds that you collect and then remit to the state. So that seven million dollars is sitting in your accounts, but it's not your money.
So we're just, we're just money laundering it for there.
So by state statute, you, you have the authority to collect the property taxes. So you're exercising that authority of collecting property taxes and then remitting it to the individual districts that it's for.
It's kind of like we was talking about at Brundage, or not Brundage, Jug Mountain, and that LID.
LID District, yeah. In this instance, we collect property taxes in the month of September. It's not a big tax collection month because there's no big due dates. And then we typically turn over those tax dollars by the fifteenth of the next month, which falls outside the calendar year.
Okay.
Yeah. Joe, you know, Joe, I don't know who to ask this to, but are we required by law to take on LIDs? We have to do that because in discussions in the past, after Joe Henle kind of went through, we felt like we didn't want to do this anymore for different districts. They could do their own accounting, take care of their own. You know is that?
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think that's a question for, for Mr. Oki, but I do believe we are required to collect those LIDs if an LID organization.
If it gets voted in.
The county is responsible, and I don't know if Treasury for wants to further comment, but I do believe that it is a requirement, but I would recommend that we get the legal opinion of our prosecuting attorney's office.
I, I would agree. I wouldn't, I don't have a firm.
And you charged to do that, right?
We charge a seven dollar and fifty cent administration fee on every parcel.
On every parcel. So we do get something back. Is that something new?
Administration fee, no.
Because I just remember ten or twelve years ago, Gordon, they were talking about it. We didn't want to do an LID again because it's just a pain in everybody's rear here. We have to handle, keep track of it.
Just another, I just wonder if we.
Yeah, she got to deal with.
It's another thing, yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
No, no. Turning to page eighteen, this just shows the ins and outs. So you brought in thirty-four million. You sent out about thirty-four million dollars. It's never going to be perfect because of timing of when money comes in and goes out, but it just shows everything that's going through the county. After that are the footnotes. Footnote one just goes over your basic accounting policies. I'll jump to page twenty-six. Footnote two just breaks out where your money was sitting at the end of the year. So you do have some of that investments. There in the middle of page twenty-six, that external investment pool, that's the state LJP. So that had about six point seven million in it. You have some CDs with varying maturity dates, totally about one point three million. A US government bonds, just under seventeen million there, and then some asset-backed securities, just over five million there. And then the rest of the money is sitting in cash held in the banks.
What is the, bring me up to speed on the US government bonds.
Yeah.
We have a brokerage account with multi-bank securities or MBS. And they're treasury notes or treasury bills that we purchase from the federal government. When I come in here and ask you if, if we want to invest the ARPA funds into that, that tiered or laddered system that we did all last year, those are all US Treasury bonds.
Well, that's US Treasury. Okay, I wasn't aware of that. Or I wasn't aware of the naming. I'm following you. Okay.
Well, and I think we talked to once, trying to remind me about only buying our own bonds and not international bonds.
We will always buy our own bonds, never international.
Never international, because I know that was a concern a while back.
Yeah. From there, I'll jump forward. And I'm actually going to jump forward quite a few pages here to page thirty-seven. The next couple, the next two really notes that we'll look at here just have to do with long-term obligations that the county has. In the middle of page thirty-seven, footnote eleven, compensated absences. It's vacation time that your staff has earned, but hadn't taken as at the end of the year. So you see, you went from just under six hundred thousand to about six hundred thirty thousand dollars. Most of that's just raises in wages. We've been seeing all the districts, all the counties and cities that we do have that increase. That's just as wages go up, that liability goes up. For county, your size, from what we're seeing, still within a normal reasonable range. Just something to be aware of that that is there. From there, I'll turn to page thirty-eight. Footnote fourteen, these are the long-term leases that you have, long-term obligations. You started the year with four leases with about four hundred seventy-two on those. Two new leases were entered into. I believe both of them were in the street department this year for six hundred twenty-five thousand. Two were paid off. So you ended the year with about seven hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars remaining on those. And then down below there, you can see future payments through twenty twenty-seven when those leases would be completed.
Road department.
From there, I'll jump to page forty. We already looked at one of these, but these are the budget to actuals for each of the major funds. So the general fund, revenue side, you brought in about five hundred thousand more than was planned. On the expenditure side, you spent about two and a half million dollars less than was planned. So bottom line there, you'd budgeted two and a half million of your reserve, and you ended up spending or increasing the reserve by almost five hundred thousand instead. Turn to the page fourteen, page forty-one, we already looked at that. After that's page forty-two, this is the solid waste fund. You brought in six hundred ninety thousand dollars more than was budgeted. You did exceed your budget in solid waste by about ninety thousand dollars. But bottom line, you'd budgeted to spend four hundred fifty thousand of your reserve, and you ended up increasing the reserve by twenty-seven thousand dollars. So you did go over budget, but you'd brought in additional revenue to cover that.
What was the reserve of last year, twenty-nine, five? No.
The reserve last year was about three point four in the solid waste. Yeah, your reserve was about four point four mil, three point four million dollars.
Are we thinking about relooking in those fees to get more revenue with you guys?
So my understanding, I've kind of stepped into this project midway through, but they increased fees a while back to plan for capital improvement projects. The big capital improvement project that was slated for this fiscal year, but will probably get pushed off to next fiscal year, is the transfer station upgrades, and those are estimated at about two point one million dollars.
But he has gone out with the RFPs, I think.
Has it been published? It was supposed to be published right around now, so.
I thought I saw some of the Star News a couple of weeks ago.
What are we going to use to pay for that?
Well, solid waste funds. That's why we increased the fees to raise.
What are we going to use to pay for?
Yeah.
And so if you look, the remaining cash balance is about three point four million. And that money is projected to be used for the capital improvements.
And didn't we use some of it for the recycle roof?
Correct.
And then turn to page forty-three. This is your ARPA funds. You hadn't budgeted anything to come in. You did get the local and tribal consistency funds, the six point seven million there. You'd budgeted to spend two, two million, only spent about three hundred thousand of the ARPA funds for the year, causing that increase of six and a half million dollars. From there, I'll jump forward again to page forty-eight. These next couple of reports, I'll kind of just going to show you what's there. So if you have questions, stop me. Page forty-eight, this just breaks out the general fund revenue to a little bit more detail. I'm there. I'm showing what was going on. And then pages forty-nine through fifty, forty-nine through fifty-one, this breaks out the general fund by department, again, showing budget to actual there. Overall, every department, I think, came in under budget or pretty close to budget. So not, nothing there really stood out on those.
Boy, the treasurer was right on, wasn't she?
Sellers were right on. Four number, I think, was within a dollar. Overall. Some had, you know.
Mister's were right on. Look at that, we had exact numbers.
I think the only one that went over in total over budget was human resources, and they went over two dollars, so. All things considered, I, I consider that being on budget with.
That's Mike's.
Uh, we're going to go after that guy.
Chase those two dollars. And then pages fifty-two through fifty-nine, this shows the balance sheet for all of the other funds. The main thing when we're looking at those that we're always looking for is if any of them went negative for the year, if they used more than they had cash on hand. None of them went negative. All of them ended the year with a positive amount. So there were none, none of those that caused concern. So unless there's something you would like to go through specifically, I won't go through those line by line. And then along the same notes, page sixty through sixty-seven is the income statement for those. And like we saw earlier, in total, they did use about six hundred thousand of the reserve. So some of them used reserve, some of them increased reserve, but again, none of them went negative. None of them. So some of them used reserve, some of them increased the reserve. But again, none of them went negative, none of them used more money than they had in reserves to use.
If you have any questions, just speak up.
I have already read and reviewed this and asked all my questions to Jordan a few weeks ago.
Probably been down his throat.
Okay.
It's amazing the difference, how different departments have grown and changed financially.
And then page sixty-eight and sixty-nine, this just breaks out those custodial funds into help for other governments. That's money that you get for the state of Idaho and then taxing district funds, those are funds you collect for taxing districts. So it just splits that out to a little bit more detail. From there, I'll jump to page seventy-one. So because as a county, you spend over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal funds. In addition to the normal audit, we have what's called a single audit, where that just means we look at the federal money. So this just shows the federal funds that were spent for the year. Your two biggest ones were PILT money and then federal forest, school and roads money. And then a little bit of the, that coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, that's your ARPA money there. So turning to page seventy-three. With that comes these two additional reports. So seventy-three goes over controls with financial reporting and compliance with financial reporting. They're really what we're looking at is, are more than one set of eyes looking at invoices before they're paid. Our bank statements being reconciled and reviewed, you know, as, or is one person doing everything? As we looked at that, we saw where invoices were being approved, we pull a sample of invoices, make sure that their commissioners have approved them or that they've been approved before we paid. And we looked at bank statements to make sure that those were being reconciled and reviewed. We didn't have anything that, that came to our attention that we felt was a material weakness in that system.
That's really good news.
Yes. And then seventy-five, this is specific to federal money. Again, we're looking at controls over federal money. Are those things being approved? Are the funds being spent in accordance with the requirements of those federal funds? And we didn't see any issues there. Controls were in place to monitor those funds and how they were spent, so nothing to report on those. So overall, a good, clean audit report. It was a fun year with the transition in software. There, there were a few things we saw in that transition, but we were able to get all of those straightened out and everything was accounted for and, and taken care of. So at the end, it was all good.
So is that software going to work with yours?
Yeah, I mean, our, we were able to pull all the reports we needed out of that software and pull it into what we use, so. Everything was there. We were able to get in, you know, look at all the invoices that we needed, get all the reports that we needed out of there. So yeah, it worked great.
Jordan, on the fair board, that was kind of a quick one. Were you able to go in and look at anything that we need to do different there as far as cash and that kind of stuff?
No, what we saw is some good improvements from the prior year. The one, yeah, I, I mean, everything was, all the invoices were there, all the bank statements were reconciled and looked at. So from where it was three years ago to now, it's, it's, they've done a lot, much better job of keeping those records and making sure everything's there.
And I don't know, we haven't found a treasure yet for the fair board so far. We may go backwards next year, but we'll see.
Okay.
Yeah, we got a treasure.
We did?
Yep.
Casey?
Nope. This gal is, works for Alby. Couldn't tell you her name. Carl, Carl knows her very well. She takes care of all of Alby's.
Okay. I can't tell her name. I want to say it's Kim, but I can't remember.
Well, that's something, that's good news because I haven't heard. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion then that we approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit presentation by Swigert and Associates for Valley County.
Second.
Who did second all in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries.
So Jordan, do you have a copy of each of those that you can leave here for Sherry?
Yes, yeah. I, I'll leave both of these copies here for her.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, at this time then, we are going to dismiss as the Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the Valley County EMS District Board. Doug, the time is ten twenty-two, and we will convene and get a presentation on the EMS audit.
Perfect.
Thank you, Jordan.
Yep, thank you. This will be a lot faster.
We're in no hurry.
So here, I'll, I'll just jump to page three of the audit report for the EMS. Again, we looked at, at everything in this one. The EMS is a little bit simpler, there's very few checks that go out of it. But we were able to look at the checks, look at the bank statements, and everything was recorded correctly. So in our opinion, everything was materially correct for that.
So now this is the EMS that.
This will be.
That we're still dealing with, is that correct?
Till the end of fiscal year and then it goes to the new EMS board.
Yeah.
We are out of it.
So yeah, I think twenty twenty-four will be the last on that one. Turning to page, I'll turn to page seven. So at the end of the year, the EMS had a hundred forty-three thousand dollars of cash sitting in the bank. And then you had thirty thousand dollars of back property taxes still owed there. And then no outstanding liabilities. Then turning to page nine. So total revenue brought in was one point two million dollars. Total expenses was one point two million dollars. Or you increased your reserve by just under a thousand dollars. So pretty much everything that came out, came in, went out to the different districts and to pay for a few things. After that are the footnotes. Really, there's not much in the footnotes, it's all pretty consistent with what it's been in the past. The only thing we did add in there, the only new footnotes on page sixteen. We did put in a subsequent event note, basically saying that a new EMS district was formed. We felt that that was material to this same district that it was formed, and next year we'll update that note to reflect that it's closing down and that new district's taking over.
So after that's done, we won't even get this.
No, we would no longer need to do this EMS audit because the new EMS district will be responsible for their own audit.
But we still have to account for the back taxes that haven't been paid yet, what, three years?
It depends, Mr. Chairman, but yes, so the back taxes that are owed and penalties and interest will still be collected by the county.
Keep track of that.
And we'll, during our remittance, we will be turning that, those funds over to the new Valley Countywide EMS district.
And so that, that will still be accounted for in the county-wide audit, but at that point, I, we wouldn't need to do this audit because that dollar amount's not going to.
Does this have that amount in it?
So it was thirty, thirty thousand dollars at the end of the year.
Thirty thousand one sixteen.
Yep. But that's as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Any more questions for Jordan? I would entertain a motion to approve this audit.
I'm like, mostly approve the EMS, Valley County EMS district audit.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries.
All right, thank you. And I'll offer, because that was, you know, a lot of information there. If you do have questions, feel free to reach out. I'm more than happy to go over more information, you know, details if you want, but otherwise, thank you.
Jordan, thank you so much.
Jordan, I'm, I'm not running this year, so I won't see you next year, but tell your dad hello for me.
I will. Oh, hi. Do you want me to just give these?
Yeah, just give them to me and I'll, I'll put them here at Odesk.
All right, I'll let him know.
Okay.
And I think he has a couple more years that he's still doing his thing at the state and then he's done.
And he's done.
Do you want this microphone back?
No. Thanks, have a great day. Our next agenda item is not till eleven o'clock, so we are going to mute and see everyone back here at eleven.